I need a motion for it.
Oh, I thought that was.
I move that we open the meeting of the planning board on November fourth.
Second day of the day.
Second.
All's in favor?
Fifth. Fifth.
Okay.
Yes.
The Raleigh Planning Board meeting, November. Did you push it? It's the fifth. The motion was the fifth. I think, did you say four?
I did say four, though.
Corrected as well, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So that meeting is open. The continued public hearing for Main Street at Sotheby's. The materials and responses just came in today, is that correct?
Yes.
What's your recommendation? Do you have a recommendation that we continue the hearing?
Yeah, I actually have a letter from, request from Chris Roca. Requesting we'll continue saying, he sent me this yesterday. We've, we'll be submitting the package of information tomorrow. I'd like to be on the next scheduled agenda for the planning board, preferably November nineteenth. Was requesting. But, yeah, their request will continue.
For Main Street? Nineteenth is two weeks from now, right? We should add a motion to continue the for Main Street.
Make a motion.
Public hearing until seven thirty on the nineteenth.
Is that, am I having a meeting nineteenth?
Is that right?
It's a week before the fourth, I'm assuming, that's okay.
Second.
Is that okay with everyone, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
I gotta check something first, I can't let you get the song right now.
One's a chance, you know, if they, we can get back to them if we have to. Change if we can. Just think about it during the meeting.
Well, I gotta check, I gotta check, I have to hurry at home, that's what I gotta do.
Well, then change the motion to potentially have it under nineteen, seven thirty, pending. Check it.
December nineteenth?
No, no. November, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Would you like to run a home in?
I'm gonna make a call.
Text message. He's written something, he's not coming back.
I'm a dinosaur.
Alright, so that's, I have a motion by David, second. And that's two weeks from tonight. And at eight o'clock, we're going to, obviously, continue Mark Savory's public hearing. But in the meantime, Mark has fulfilled our conditions and requests for an issue that we brought up a few, what, a month ago? A month and a half ago?
Yes.
For the request for the release of his surety bond that is related to work that was requested by the planning board back in two thousand and four. So this was a cash surety bond that's been held by the town since that time, two thousand and four. And so, you've done some research on this?
Yeah.
You have a recommendation that we release that?
Yeah, that we, it was actually tied to landscaping, it was done for the landscaping that was done on site, which, if you remember back in April, the board met on site to look at the landscaping improvements in the pavement. I think the only thing that wasn't quite done then was the, there was a tree or two that needed to be put in, and that had been put in, and then there was some striping that needed to be installed, which was done. So, since those, since that bond was tied directly to the landscaping and to the paving, and that was completed, then I probably, you know, we have, after the lease, that twenty thousand dollar bond.
Right, because it's related by memo signed by the planning board at that time. Just to those items, I don't, did you see it?
Well, the second.
Well, basically, I'll read it, this is a memo that's.
Those, those items are done.
Right, and that, so it's just related, as you point, Mark, you pointed that out, right?
Yeah.
Because you had to do a little bit of research to go back to this memo. Again, dated in, I think, was it September two thousand and four or something?
Yeah, it was two thousand September, two thousand September.
I thought so, yeah, September, I don't have the date on this copy. And that was also related until? And that also is related to actually the selectmen have been giving you your license?
Yeah.
The sales right of class two, sales automobile sales license. And that's up to date as well?
Yeah. Yeah, so the planning board had met last, there was a, two stipulations. One, that he submit the receipt for the landscaping, which he did. He did that back in August, and then, since then, we were waiting for a letter, which I made a copy for everybody, where he is release, requesting the release of the twenty thousand surety bond, twenty thousand dollar surety bond, and then saying that he's completed the landscaping, and he also includes the paving as well, and the parking improvements. So.
Just for that, just for Bay Road Auto Sales, it doesn't pertain to the other?
And what about operation compliance, does that matter or not?
These were just site, no, it was just related to the site improvements, that's it. The other issues, obviously, are all on the table as far as further uses on the site. This isn't related to the, this isn't related, you know, to the open hearing that we have, the public hearing that we have, and the project before, this is something that Mark made a request, and we simply, we asked that he give evidence that he, you know, had done that work, hot topping, line striping, landscaping. And also, instead of just, you know, saying it and text messages and this and that, actually have a letter for the file, which he did do, and he would like the balance of surety returned to him, and also represents himself as owner of Bay Road Auto Sales.
Did someone go check this?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, the board met on site.
Whoa, 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 yeah, I was there. The board met on site, nothing, you know, there was a request for a bunch of things to be done, has anybody been over there since?
Oh, yeah, that was Larry Graham had visited, had visited the site after that, and then we had met with Mark Savory at another board, another board hearing shortly after that, and that was where, he was requested by the board to like, to submit a letter saying that he's done, finished the improvement, provide the receipts.
Which you have the receipt.
So Larry wrote a letter stating that everything's done?
Yeah, you have receipts, right?
Yeah, the receipt, yeah.
So Larry wrote a letter stating that everything is completed?
Yeah, the, I don't remember if that was done, I thought that was like, at the, at that hearing, Larry confirmed. That, I'll have to go back and see.
Basically, he did the line stripe, the line striping, the paving, and the landscaping, so. I'll take a motion, because based on the memo that we have from two thousand and four, there was a recommendation that we return the initial surety. Again, it's unrelated to, it's unrelated to the project in the public hearing that's before.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we release the bond.
The twenty thousand dollar surety, can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alls opposed?
Opposed. My swit's terrible, the landscaping isn't returned.
But that was, it's according to the original plan, remember?
Well, it is in fact.
We can ask for improvements now. Well, okay, I'll finish the vote. I have two opposed, two for. Any upstandings, or are you just thinking about it?
Well, no, I, you know, I've hung up on a specific issue, and I think it's, you know, the twenty thousand seems like a lot of money to be holding as a result of my concern, but the concern is that the striping that was done was done with a can of spray paint last time I looked, and isn't that the case today?
But there was no stipulation in the original plan, I mean.
Well, I wanted to see something from Larry that he.
You have to go back, you have to go back to the original request in the two thousand and four, you know.
You don't want, and for that reason, I'm.
It's more of a legal.
It's not in favor, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, it's more of a legal, yeah, it's more of a legal issue.
Right, I, I just know how, that means, let's just stick with this, and I'm for, in favor of.
Okay.
I just wanna say I did write the little, like, from Home Depot. It's a line striping can, and it's this little pull bell thing we have.
Yeah, let's, wait, okay, so it's three to two.
Yeah.
Can Jean go on this?
No.
I appreciate the concerns, and it is a tough one, but it does go back to the previous planning board.
That's why.
Planning board and conditions, not the current board. I just wanna point that out. So, he has every, Mark has every right.
I ain't putting my name on it.
That's fine, but, you know, the applicant has every, it's more kind of a technical thing. Alright, so that's done.
Appreciate it.
Right, so you'll handle that?
Yeah, I'll initiate that tomorrow.
Okay?
Yep.
And, and I'll take a motion to continue the hearing for the project at fifty seconds, it's at four, turn point. Next meeting, you think, I'll be able to act together?
Supposedly, I don't know, Liz said, the only reason she's having them down is because Larry hasn't gotten back to her on comments. Kurt, do you understand what she meant?
Yeah, it was because that we just got them last week, and then Larry hasn't had a chance to look at those yet, so. I mean, typically, there'll be time, if you want him to try to make the night, November nineteenth, I don't think Larry will have a problem.
Okay.
I mean, I want the Riley Electric.
I'm sure he's doing it as we speak, but we can't go point to point.
Make a motion, we continue the hearing to the nineteenth.
Eight o'clock, okay?
Yeah. Uh, no, I said, I'll say.
Eight o'clock on the nineteenth?
I'll second that motion.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Alright, Mark, we'll see you then.
Alright, thank you.
And we'll have time, we got some, we just all, as board members, just received, did you get full-size plans for your?
Yeah, I've got one copy, which.
One copy of full-size for you?
I'm gonna, no, I've still gotta get copies.
Alright, what we have in our packets, and look those over for the nineteenth. You can see, did you print, yeah, the eleven by seventeen. I mean, Kurt gave us that for our packets for tonight.
I gave, because I printed it out from.
But again, it's very recent, so.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that people look those over closely, and maybe we should send another site visit as well, based on, you know, what we see on those packets. We have, well, in the meantime, we might as well do, if you look at in your packets, Kurt can, on C, the Form J release for the country club.
Okay. C.
Is anybody here for that? Are we just doing that internally?
Uh, that's gonna be an ongoing project, because I was gonna.
You wanna report on that, you wanna direct us, what? The essence of it is that the as-built plan for the whole project is in Larry's possession, the as-built plan also is in your package. It's pretty much done, so they're asking, remember, this is a private road, so we're not, they're not looking for.
Right.
Town street acceptance, looking to close out.
So the town doesn't plow it, right?
No, looking to close out, looking to close out the project. We're only wanting a lot of money on this project.
Yeah, yeah.
Like over one thousand.
What, quarter thousand?
So anybody, any residents over there have any problem at all, it doesn't come here. It doesn't go to the town either.
With the site.
I'm glad you bring that up, you're right.
It stays within, within their perimeter, and that's it. Town's got no responsibility for it.
That's all, but it was originally.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, anything else in there?
It must have been, yeah.
Yeah, the remaining, the remaining, this has been going down as the project goes through its phase completions. There's fifty-seven remaining, and you'll see that, the scheduled dispersment, so what is their formal request?
Well, the, see, where they're at right, right now, I get, previously, when it was when they had the reduction, we have the fifty-seven thousand, they had directional signs, and the fire access road gate needed to be put in, and then the as-built, and then the top course paving would have to be done, that's, that's all been done, except there's some issue with the speed limit signs, which needs to be resolved.
Yeah.
And then the as-built need to be reviewed by Larry.
So they're gonna wait to make, yeah, I asked him, if they, at some point, they need to come in, I'm not gonna speak for them, they need to come in and explain that, so they should.
So they're not complete either?
They should, well, no, it's just an issue with Dodge Road speed limit signs, and finding out what the process is with the state, and so, they may come in and ask us to explain, like we did with Wild Pastures, to maybe modify how that can be accomplished in a way that is satisfactory to us.
What exactly is the condition?
Well, basically, you know, to go through the state.
To reduce the speed limit?
And put it fifteen mile an hour signs in there, and that entails, it's not as easy as you think, and you have to go through the state and do extensive traffic.
Fifteen inside the property?
No, no, Dodge Road.
On Dodge Road, okay.
So, to, that could cost over like ten thousand dollars even to do the state with traffic studies.
Who wants it reduced to fifteen?
I mean, it was just part, it was part of making sure with increased traffic that it would be safe travel on that road. Maybe some, they may be able to brainstorm and come to us with alternatives that might be less expensive to the applicant once they find out, and also, not, not so much expense as well as the, how long it takes for the state to make decisions.
But to your process.
So that could really hold up, so I might be unnecessarily holding up closing out this project, that's all. But I would rather hear that, that's basically a synopsis, I'd rather hear that, is that accurate or different? So, I asked them to come in and raise, and just, you know, like we did with Wild Pastures, and just, as a board, look at what, you know, they're thinking about what options they could do now. I'm not gonna speak for them.
Yeah, let them make the case.
I'm not gonna speak for them.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the gist of it, alright? So, so we're really taking no action tonight?
Yeah, there will be the action.
Okay, but read.
Or just a, like, update.
Is there a board of directors in there for that, that development?
Trustees.
Trustee? You think the guy who runs it, or who's in charge should appear to come, come see us?
Maybe a good idea. Say they're ready to close out.
Because if he's got any problems with the, with the bill, then let, let, you know, let the dirt fly now.
Yeah.
I mean, grant he can't come to us, or anybody in that development can come to the town, or us, at any time, once we sign off on it.
Once it's closed off.
But still, you know, I wanna see the people unhappy, they paid a lot of money, they go in there too, you know?
It's a good point.
Because once he's gone, he's gone, you know, it's all on them, and I'd like to, everything's done.
I think that's a good idea, give them an opportunity to come in.
Yeah, and if they don't show up, well, you know what, you had your opportunity.
Yeah, right. Certainly, no one knows better than those forty families that are in there.
Exactly, exactly, so I think the guy who wants his trustee.
We'll be inviting the president of the association, or what they call it, what he, you know.
You know, if he's gonna complain, he can iron it out with the guy who's, who's looking to get his money.
Chairman of the board of trustees, I suppose.
Alright.
Larry had made a suggestion about maybe a subcommittee of board members, planning board members, meeting on site, and inspecting the site.
Well, you know, for the most part, you know, maybe some board members don't know, they're looking at, that's why, you know.
Well, I'd be going out there, I'm going out there.
Right, I mean, you know, I'm familiar with construction, maybe everybody is.
You should go, you're familiar with it.
But, but, you know, the people who live there.
Yeah, well, that's on top of Larry's.
It's not, it's not in lieu of what you're saying, it's just in addition to.
I feel, I. Larry's going too. Alleviate us from any, we found the road too, you know what I mean? Because once we wash our hands, that's it.
Great point, okay, so, again, please, so Kurt doesn't have to reprint these or anything, we have some memos from, these are recent memos within the last ten days from Jill Mann. You know, I gotta give the developer credit for, you know, coming in and doing a nice project and.
And doing it so fast.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
It's amazing how tight that place is, it's beautiful, I mean, you know, landscaping's perfect, you know, I mean, you know, even the transitions from the sidewalk to the street, he's got handicap accessible mats embedded in the, in the pavement.
The architecture of the homes is decent.
I mean.
Can you imagine the landscaping in three years?
Well, I play golf over there, and there's a guy who lives there that tends to, who works at the golf course, and I talked to him, he's very happy over there. He's one of the first guys in.
And I think there's a commitment for improvement to the quality of the course, the course itself. It takes a while, the course had been neglected, deferred maintenance on the course.
Well, that wasn't their fault, that was the guy.
No, but I'm just saying, I think there's a commitment to make it better and better.
Right, I've heard that myself too, yeah.
Alright, so that's just an update, if you want to, anyone to do minutes, you have minutes? We'll be.
Don't, don't have any other public hearings, no?
So when is this site visit, you have it scheduled yet?
No.
Also, I just wanna, I don't really need a motion, yes, but, yeah, communicate with, with the owner, with, you know, Ralph, to, to Georgia, to try to get on.
Yeah, I know, but, you know.
The next agenda.
Okay, same terms, the night.
Yeah, and they may not be ready then either, but I think it's imperative, if they wanna close it up, to deal and come to us if they want to amend any of this certificate or vote, if they wanna do any amendments on that or.
Well, you know, like I said, I'd like to.
But we have to change that first before we can even consider closing it out.
What's that?
We have to amend the certificate of vote before entering.
I wonder in retrospect whether that fifteen mile an hour speed limit was more a concern for the construction, or was it a concern for the increased volume of traffic based on the new residences? Because I know there was a great deal of concern about how many additional trucks and.
Right, during the construction.
And workers would be out there coming up and down the road, but.
I think it's a historical concern on that road.
Oh, yeah.
Because of its narrowness, its windiness, and.
See, that's Daniels.
It's not.
They both.
Dodge is, Dodge is the farm road, right?
Oh, that's right, that's right, so this was Dodge, this was the fifteen on Dodge, right?
Yeah, yeah.
See, that's less important.
I think it was construction.
Well, I mean, we'll look into that, okay, but they're gonna come anyways.
Yeah, I would love to see a fifteen mile on that hearing, but it's.
I don't know if people would really obey fifteen.
Not on Dodge, it's too long a road and going nowhere, you know?
They put the speed limit aside.
There's other signs, there's other signs you can put up, and I think it will give Kurt some time to talk to the highway surveyors.
Sure.
And I should have signed the twenty.
Alright, let's go on, you want to do, you guys are here for what, the A and R?
Church Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Main Street, Church Street.
Main Street, Church Street.
I'd put.
If you're here, I don't wanna make you wait, so you might as well. You don't really need it on the second paragraph, first sentence, third paragraph, sorry, on the same item. I don't know, various departments, seems a little bit redundant. Various departments have reviewed and submitted numerous comments, various.
Just say various, though.
In some ways, that there are several.
Yeah, right.
So you don't need numerous.
It was timed really good.
The economy is just getting done.
The economy.
So I just have to take it off?
Yeah. Problem.
Your comment.
And bottom line, White Hill Farms is not for me.
Oh, man, and White Hill?
Was it White Farms?
Yes, White Farms.
It was white.
Okay, I kind of thought that was the case.
Where do you have that?
I don't know why I thought it was right.
Oh, it's been corrected on yours.
Yeah, it's corrected on mine.
Yeah, because I actually thought about it after I said, and then I went on the.
Alright, so it's already been corrected, so, take notes, it's already been corrected.
Hey, I think it's a small point, but Liz is facing seconds, she's not quite part of the parliamentary requirements, does she echo the concerns? Or? Yeah, right, agrees with.
Nothing's too small, that's what I think.
The other thing, and is that the same paragraph where you said that Eliana Paglia asked about the location of the subject system? I mean, and then you just drop it, and there's no further reference, I mean, I think she was told that it's the existing, you gotta be using the existing subject system, right? Behind the building, behind the. And it'll inform that it's not, it'll remain in its present location.
Reach towards our property.
Trying. They can give me some pointers. They can give me some pointers. Give me. I'll take that, throw it to you.
On forty-four West Oaks pasture, do you have, for the record, can people refer to any, Cliff gave a synopsis, I think I had the meeting, but is there, is there a written synopsis someplace, and if people came in and said?
Yeah, I can, I haven't done the.
No, you only have twenty hours of women, you don't have, you know.
Yeah, I can get.
Do you think that would be useful, to have something backed up in writing? I mean, it doesn't need to be necessarily articulated in the minutes about everything.
I think it'd be useful.
Yeah. Yeah, I can.
Someone wants to come into the planning office and say, you know.
Yeah, no, I think it.
What was spoken about that meeting?
The one you did.
What were the major concerns and items that came up in that joint meeting?
Yeah, I, by all means.
Yeah.
Well, I'll do that.
You can do that, I know you took some notes.
Yeah, I got, I got.
And then, in the minutes, when you're done with that, or just reference, you know, I don't know, how could you say it?
He's going to be preparing a written summary.
Written summary will be available in the planning office.
Okay, I think there should be a very subject for that matter, I think it's a very valid point, good point, because, you know, Tom or if anybody comes in.
Yeah, when we have these joint meetings, there should be something that people can refer to later. I mean, they're useful meetings, and a lot gets talked about.
Oh, yeah. It's more, it's more to your benefit more than anybody, because they knock on your door first.
Yeah.
It'll be a big help to you too, Ian, that's.
And it helps with the context and what happens, happens later, so.
It's a very, very, very good idea.
Alright, and a motion to approve it?
You make the motion, we both have minutes.
Whether, okay, second by Steve, alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those are done. Alright, Kurt, do you want to talk about your two things that you've been working on? One is the memorandum of agreement, and, and I think, I was supposed to, Cliff and Larry met at West Oaks pasture to see the location of, you know, the driveway, there's a double driveway, the catch base and that, the base of it, based on the April.
Well, it was actually, we met there to discuss the other issue about the sidewalk, leading to one of the.
Right, that's right, you met for the other second issue, so.
While we were there, we also looked at the.
Yeah, so the memorandum, the memorandum of understanding refers to the driveway.
Yeah.
You were working at that, and I do wanna report on that, where you're at with it.
I think everybody's got a copy of that memorandum.
Is that a final draft, or is that still?
Well, it's not, I sent it also to Larry, he made comments, and I was gonna make changes, and then I sent it to Judy as well, and she made some comments. and then I sent it to Judy as well, and she made some comments, but she also came back and, and I was gonna report this, but this was just the other day, and said that she, like, she would suggest, instead of a memorandum of agreement, to actually do a modification on the, on the plan, under the chapter forty-one, section eighty-one W, I think it is, in the Massachusetts General Law. But, so I was gonna put that out there to see how the board felt.
Did you talk to Larry about that?
Larry doesn't agree, he thinks that's overkill, that he was the one who actually suggested in the first place to do a waiver, and then when I, when I went to Judy, she said, well, the waiver is probably not what it, because nothing's really being waived, more like you're trying to come to an understanding or agreement, and that's what Larry was asking for, is that, well, if the town lets them keep the driveway curb cut with, as it is, then they can't come back later and, and demand that the town fix something that's associated with, with that same improvement that they, that they wanted to keep. So that would be the nature of the agreement, the town lets them keep the curb cut as the way it is, and they, they basically say, we're not gonna, you know, bother the, bother the town to fix it later.
But it's not, it's not, number one, she pointed out, this is town council, that it's not binding.
Disagreement.
Yeah, it's not binding, it also doesn't transfer to the next owner.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I just, I apologize. Because I just, I was thinking, this should be something that potentially should be recorded with the registry deed, sort of appears in the chain of titles, but that's, this isn't necessarily, title issue, it's regulatory for that reason, that wouldn't be appropriate, so.
Yeah.
You maintain it in your records, which is fine, but not everybody goes, does research with the planning department to figure out, you know, so for that reason, the modification of the site plan might be the appropriate way to go, because if they ever go back and say, well, let's see what was supposed to be here, that modification would indicate that this is the appropriate build, as built, we were, if not intending initially, we ultimately approved.
Yeah, and that's what Judy killed.
Well, I had asked that it'd be reflected in the Asbrough, but I see what you're saying, but. So it really would not be, it wouldn't be reflected from a survey, from a civil side, and she wants it reflected in a new civil plan.
Yeah.
A civil.
It should be actually reflected.
That means that any. That's what I'm saying, so the civil, what she's at, listen please, because it's important that, you can't just make one change pertaining to this, and if you revise the civil plan, and I have to, then someone has to go out and revise every builder's field changes or, or, you know, changes that were made, you know, you can't just do one, right? You can't just do.
Well, you can't, yeah.
Well, because it's still not accurate, she wants an accurate plan, right? Isn't that what she said?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's the idea.
Who was she, on the town council?
Oh, okay.
That's the apology, she's pretty good. I mean.
You can't blame her, she's the one, you know.
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
If her owner comes along.
In the past, I gotta look at case law, I need some more, maybe I'll have to speak to her. Because I have to see how, Cliff, how does this pertain to other Asbills when small cha, you know, basically a developer comes in, you know, builds a road, puts in utilities, brings utilities to the.
Just catch basins in.
Right, and then sells lots, and then builders make some small tweaks, you know, to, when they build and they get on site.
Well, builders in conjunction with our review agent, Larry, I mean, the field agent.
Well, four days, just he go out for eight days.
Huh?
He doesn't go out for every individual lot.
No, but I'm saying, because.
Oh, no.
We're talking about field changes, right?
Well, yeah, on the site, on the road itself, you know, the subdivision, but this is kind of.
We don't modify the approved plan to reflect every field change that's, that's approved, if that's what you're.
Well, because it's really where what we don't control meets what we control, you know, the individual lots, you know, when, when those building permits are given.
But what we do control is the curb cut, in this case, the double wide curb cut.
We do, that's a good point. So I think.
So if we were to.
If you gotta do that, then you gotta check where there's any other curb cuts set or, or difference.
What, that subdivision or?
That's what, that's what town council is telling you. They're not just revise the plan to indicate that Pronti's property.
What, is she saying revise the plan or revise the permit?
She would say.
Modify the site plan approval.
Revise, do a minor modification on the, on the site plan.
Subdivision.
The subdivision plan.
Well, if, that's probably what has to be done, to get the town off the hook in case there is a new owner or something happens. I mean, that's, that's, I'm sure that's all the looking block.
What do you mean by minor modification?
Well, that's, Judy used the word minor modification and then pointed me to, to chapter forty-one, eighty-one W.
Did you look at that?
Yeah, and it doesn't actually say, and I haven't been able to run this down exactly because it doesn't say anything about minor modification, what it actually says.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it actually says in line with, you know, the standard subdivision approval. There's specific, oh, right, here it is. Planning board on its own motion or on the petition, if any person interested shall have the power to modify, amend, or rescind this approval of a plan of a subdivision or to require a change in a plan as a condition of its retaining the status of an approved plan. All of the provisions of the subdivision control law relating to the submission and approval of a plan of a subdivision shall so far as be applicable to the approval of the modification.
Well, by calling it a minor modification, is she suggesting that we don't need to, that we can change the approved plan without holding a public hearing, or is she saying we have to do this following a public hearing?
I think.
She's saying, she was saying the, just the, that it wouldn't require the public hearing and the, that's what, that's what she was saying, and that's what I want to, I want to go back and just talk to her about this section.
Yeah, please have her explain her interpretation and go with the awesome, if there's any citation in the handbook that you have, I'm gonna see what's said on that with case law. He's got a book, he's, you know.
And is she further saying that we'd need a revised as-built plan?
Well, the as-built plan, it hasn't been submitted yet.
The as-built will show how it's been built, right? So the as-built will reflect this change, but. So are we modifying as a minor modification or as a modification after a public hearing the plan or the subdivision approval?
The plan.
The plan. The approved plan. The approved plan.
Well, and also, there's one page in the approval that cites the plan, so you gotta add one more.
Right, okay.
You know, when you close it out.
I mean, if we can do this without having a public hearing, I think maybe that's just the way to go, if we just approve a change, basically.
I kind of agree with her in that regard, because if somebody.
They'll not fall in line, yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, somebody comes, you can still have a supportive memorandum saying that what came up, which is not, I don't.
But, you know, it is.
But at the same time, someone does the research and they, oh, this is, it's pretty normal.
It is a very minor issue, it seems to me, and I hope we don't have to, you know, notify everyone in the neighborhood that we're holding this public hearing and that they all come in here wondering what it's about, and they find out it's just a very minor issue, you know? But, you know, the.
All right, you're gonna do more research, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Can we allow him so we can discuss his next name?
Sure. I mean, and just to say, my, what's the concern that I was expressing with Steve here, is that we've got a double wide driveway now, there's a catch basin right next to it, and this is gonna have, create greater runoff, if it starts ponding there as a result, somebody could say it's because you cut this double wide driveway that was never approved, and then the town's on the hook for moving forward on, or approving something other than what they originally, or allowing something that was, other than, that was originally approved.
That's a precedent we don't want.
Right.
I think that's what the town, that lady is looking for, she wants, we don't want this coming back.
Yeah.
All right, good point, thank you, Kurt, but I would like to come up with, and while I have a chance to talk to Larry as well, but I want a plan of action, and then this relayed to, what's, what's the owner's name again?
Pronti. Or you don't, Georgia Lockes.
Yes, Jim Jordan, because this is imperative for him to, you know, try to get his approval for, you know.
Right.
So he can get on, a delay, you know, we're trying to get the road accepted, and he's, he's there, just the question of getting this one item finished, you know, this is really it, right? And do we need to, is there also a change regarding, you know, this trail?
Well, if we're gonna do one, make a formal change for one, we should probably make a formal change for both, I would, so we just take that.
Do you want to report on that? This is a minor.
Oh, on the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, there's a sidewalk, on the, on the plan, the plan shows a sidewalk that goes down the right-hand side of West pasture drive, goes down the hill, it's the access, the main access to the subdivision, and it, how long is the sidewalk, maybe a hundred feet?
About a hundred, twenty feet.
And it only goes to a point where there's a, where there's an open space trail that leaves the road, so the trail goes up to, it's like perpendicular to the road, it goes up to the right, so the sidewalk, as shown in the plan, goes down to the point where you would get on this trail, and the idea being to provide access to the open space trail, which probably most people don't use anyway, because that's the nature of these things, but. The problem is that the person who built the house right on that corner, adjacent to where the sidewalk should be, built the house significantly higher than, I guess Larry thought it would be, as a result of which, in order to put this sidewalk in, you have to cut in substantially to the, to the person's yard, and it's also.
And the septic.
It's also, Larry feels, it's also potentially impacting or could impact the septic, the leaching field, so.
Sure.
So it's, it's, it's created a problem, and the question is, what do you do about it, and Larry felt that the best thing was just simply eliminate the sidewalk, because it really doesn't seem to be much of a need for it, and I went, I went there to look at it with him, and I have to agree with him, I don't think it really serves an important purpose, I mean, you could, there's a sidewalk on the other street, you could walk down that sidewalk, and if you wanted to use the open space trail, you simply cross the road and. Would it make sense for them to consider some sort of marking on the street so that they can, so that the trail continues, even if it's just through a painted line down the side of the street, so that it ultimately terminates at the, the head of that trail? I mean, I guess I'm trying to, you know, the reason we do open space is so that people use the open space.
Right.
Well, you can still use it. I mean, you can still use it, but that's the question, how you get there.
Is there any indication that it's there?
I guess I'm just trying to make sure people.
Well, I like your idea.
I mean, it's, you know, the.
It's still, it leads people.
I don't want to inhibit, we don't inhibit, but I want to encourage them to get there, and I bet that again, I don't know if that's the right way to go either, where basically the sidewalk ends, a painted walkway.
You mean across the street?
Well, adjacent to where the sidewalk should have been.
Well, this one on Newberry Parks Road there, that house in there, goes up to the cornfield there, that little road there.
With a map and, you know, that's a parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, maybe they could put, I don't know, I mean, that indicates what's up there.
Do we require ORSRDs like a sign of the open space trail? We have signs.
Enjoy this public.
There are signs, there are subdivision that say open space.
Yeah, I think, I think there's one at that point, as I recall.
It has a map, you know, a map?
Right. Not sure about that. I've seen another location where it says enjoy this open space trail.
Is there a sign right, right where that trail?
Very good point, Chris, very good.
We're running that, huh?
Yeah, really.
All right, there's another, okay, so take, write that down, that we're considering that as a stipulation.
Like signage though.
In return for.
Well, you know.
The homeowner is always, so.
I'm gonna go see, Larry, on the other side, where you said you could.
You can just walk across the street, I mean, it's not a busy road, you know, that's the thing.
Is there a sign that indicates that that's what you need to do?
Um, I'm not sure.
Well, that's what Chris said, a sign that indicates that you need to do this to access.
Right, something that just, at least people know that the end of the sidewalk, if you continue a little further, you'd get to the open space trail that's down the way. Right now, it's terminating what sounds like a raised mounted septic system in the guy's front lawn, right?
Well, you know.
Goes past that, you know.
I think what he was also saying was that they would grade that down and that there would actually be, like, it wouldn't be a concrete sidewalk, but there would be a flat area that's about three feet wide, that somebody could walk if they wanted to in the grass along that lot three, down to the trail.
But just as an indication.
I'm just trying to keep the, the access to the trailhead as, as obvious and welcoming as, as it should be, you know?
Which was, which was the, the original intent of the sidewalk to begin with.
Right, which, and for that reason, you know, it just means some.
You may want to walk and talk.
Walkway, that, you know, so, so no one says, hey, can we, can we go down that trail or not? Was that that guy's private property, you know, something that says, keep going, and here you're gonna get to.
Probably signage would actually, because if you had like maybe a couple of signs on the other side of the road where there was sidewalk, and there are cross, there are crosswalks there, and in the sidewalk, and you go down, there's another crosswalk at the bottom of cross from where the trailhead is, right? At least that's what shows up on the plan, but it wasn't, it didn't, okay.
And, you know, and alternatively, if there's not adequate sign, just something that just let people know that this is no control.
Yeah.
You know?
Maybe we could just leave it in design.
It doesn't need to be marking up to three hundred.
Okay.
Is that something, I just discussed that with Larry about what kind of design might change that.
Maybe I have this development, might, might make a little contributions towards something up there or something, you know?
Yeah, I'd see a couple hundred bucks to put aside.
Yeah, really, really. What he's gonna say about up on the sidewalk, you know?
All right, so you guys are here, right? To be honest, Kurt knows more about this than I do, I mean, this is, so you're intending to put this before, last approval next time?
He hopes so.
Okay, cause he'll submit.
This is actually, I put on there an A and R, but it was because it follows up the previous A and R, which I, that's your eleven by seventeen, shoot that.
All right, this refers to eleven by seventeen we have in front of us on the.
That was the A and R, just for the background, but what they're gonna be posing is now that they've done that A and R on the lot two, they're talking about developing and putting two, two holes on, on that, on that one lot, this is the two.
Right, because we already did this one.
Yeah, so this is that, and it's, it's a site plan review, and I also noticed that, and we'll have to ask you guys about this, about whether that's gonna be a common show driveway, or, or maybe not, or a special.
All right, so this is, just for the record, this is an informal discussion, it's not before us formally, it's gonna be site plan review, that would have to be advertised, and so, and you get just, this is, this is to help.
All right.
This is to help you and us just get the right, you probably, you know the right process you want to go through, right?
Yeah.
All right, so it's one eighty Main Street, and you look at your maps, does anyone know where this is? It's pretty odd, it's right central in Church Street by the light, that stuff right there? This is your name.
Matthew Cummings, Cummings Architects. Dave and Jeff Clark are my clients, and they came to me with a piece of property they had purchased, and it was evident there were some existing conditions, like any property, that sort of stands out. The biggest one is that they're inside the riverfront, so we can only fill in so much area or affect so much area within that riverfront, which is essentially ten percent of the area, which comes to about seventy, seventy-two hundred square feet.
You want to point out, it's what, West Ox pasture, Brook, is it?
It's over here.
Ox pasture, Brook.
Yep, and this red line indicates the edge of the riverfront area.
All right.
Okay?
Are you in front of the Concon now?
We saw them a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And.
You're pretty far at the edge of it now, the way it's developed.
They didn't throw us out of the room.
That's good.
They seemed amenable to its, to its things, so, so we did, as we, we have to be sensitive towards the conservation property, affect the least amount of area on this side of the red line. With that in mind, we need to have leaching areas that are on the upside of the property, and then, as you know, Rowley has very strict setbacks for the septic systems, so the septic systems push away from the property, which pushes our homes and project into the riverfront. And so what we did was, we tried to design the houses, oh, then we also have the historic commission we're going to say, so we want to make sure that the houses are appropriate for the area, so we did a study of the houses in downtown, and we're trying to simulate the smaller Victorian wraparound porch look.
How many dwellings are there? Two? Two years?
Just two houses, two single family homes.
Oh, two single families, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
How big is the lot?
It's a one acre lot.
Two acre lot. It's actually gonna be a two-unit condominium development, sharing the six-bedroom septic system.
The two single families will share the same septic.
Correct, right, but they'll be detached units. Mm-hmm, so the idea is to have a, a common driveway on the upper side, and, um, that accesses the first house. The yellow areas would be porches, and then a house, uh, farther back. The houses are designed around the septics to minimize the area inside the riverfront, and then we have a lower driveway for this particular house, so that we can have a garage under. Um, it doesn't make sense to have yet another garage up top, because the houses would start to almost connect to each other. Um, so what we're trying to do too is to, to suit the houses into the natural grade as well. We do have some hand sketches of what the house looks like, the houses look like, and some blocks of, of what, where the rooms would go and so forth, and we certainly would turn that in and show you next time we meet you. The idea of this meeting is to see, um, how you feel about it, but also to ask your advisement in, um, how we would proceed and, and what might be in front of us. As an example, I heard somebody mention something about a common drive, and that might require, um, a special permit or something.
It does. Well, where it's a condominium, I'm not sure if the same rule applies, but I think you have to, I mean, in the perp answer.
Are these houses all?
They're single-family homes, two single-family homes.
But they're set with their.
They're condos.
They're condos, because.
Because of the single lot. The only comment I have is the, the amount of pavement coming to, this little turnout for the first house and the turnout for the second house, tell, tell me about it.
This is all, I'm sorry, this is all on lot two, so.
Yeah.
You split off lot two from lot one a while ago, right? And then, so you're proposing to put two single-family homes on lot two?
Correct. I'm following between condos and single-family.
Because they're all on one lot. Yeah, it's, it's, it's semantics, really.
And have you visited the building inspector, and, uh, he's, uh, given you his blessing for, for what you're proposing?
We saw the building inspector at some point, but we also saw the, the town planner who was here for the, when she was here, too. So we, yeah.
Did, you didn't answer my question.
I, I was going to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just that each person.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, yep. Um, the idea of this driveway, David, is for somebody to be able to park here and be able to come right into their house. This is a grade level, as you should say, this first floor is at this level, but this is actually a drive under. The street has a slope, and there's a retaining wall, existing retaining wall on, in the front, and this is, this is quite a bit of a plinth.
You have almost ten feet there.
It is, nat- naturally, it's about eight feet.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, I'm looking at your, your, your topo's there, you know?
So if we had people drive in here, and this is how they would enter, they actually would have to walk up a full flight of stairs to get to their house. So it'd seem logical that guests or people who came into the house naturally would drive in here and come right into a front door, and here you sort of sneak underneath to, as a, as a garage under.
I think it's a great place to live, you know, it's a.
Yeah.
The idea of this is to have, be able to allow people to park without having to play musical cards, so if somebody parked here, somebody else doesn't have to come out and ask somebody else to.
I think it looks like more than it really is, David.
The conservation commission has asked us to look at the impervious, impervious versus impervious area and come up with some ideas, so that's certainly a concern of theirs.
That's part of my question, and the other part is it looks like an awful lot of pavement compared, it's, I think it's taking away from your house somehow, so if maybe you can get parallel parking on the driveway or something, I'd get.
Yeah.
You don't have to do strict pavement, too, you can make some, like, look, it could be gravelly pavement. They're getting much better with the impervious pavements.
Yeah, we'd be amicable to that, that, this frankly.
See, it's a really nice work on that, and Thomas.
The level of, the level of detail we have here is, this is a driveway shape, and we have it colored gray. It's not necessarily depicting a material.
Tasteful depending on materials you use.
Mm-hmm.
And you do have room to entertain with im- impervious surface for, um, you know, gardens that are actually, will, will get you some removal, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Like they do in parking lots now all over the place, like, like Whole Foods in Winfield, for example. Makes extensive uses of, uh, landscaping and rain gardens to do some, you know, impervious stormwater management.
I think that, I think that's what the conservation commission's hopeful to have us do.
It works well, man, it really does.
The pre-marketing sales are. The only other comment I have is, the first house coming in doesn't relate to this, neither one of these relate to the street at all. I know part of that is setback related, but.
Yeah, so they, I think the way it works is we're allowed to have the average of the houses on the street. I forget exactly how it's written, but you can just see the footprint of this house, it's almost on the street, but if you were to count this house, you can just see the corner of this barn, but then this house is pretty far over here, so.
That relates to a different street, yeah, Main Street.
I don't know, I mean, it's, that's, that always comes up, because it's a, it's a corner lot, so.
What do you mean, Dan?
Well, my feeling is that it could creep, creep a little bit closer to, um, Church Street.
We had it, we, we had it certainly farther back, and then we had it right up close, and we sort of picked this middle level. We, um, certainly that's up, open for discussion, where somebody would drive in, it's somewhat steep here, and be able to have a place to park that was close to where the front door, sort of makes sense.
Which, which design entails less grading, or it doesn't matter, 'cause the septic's a got to do it.
I don't think it really matters where they comes in closer or pushes back, but I think that when we have, when you see the houses more clearly, I think that would help everybody help us make the decision.
Well, you have only two choices really for architectural style in the town, which is Victorian or colonial, that's, that's it.
Oh, we're going with the little Victorian look.
The Victorian is an excellent thing, because it will give you a little bit more flexibility in the floor plan and a little bit.
And we're trying to make it look like the rest of.
How many square feet are you looking for in each house?
They're about two thousand square feet apiece.
I think they'll look good there, better than.
So not a bitty little things, but there are also not some giant thirty-five hundred square foot.
I think, I think they can be bigger, and you could sell more than myself.
Well, we're trying to mirror, we bought the property from the Togs, and we're trying to mirror that architecture, so, you know, so that it blends in with that.
This one, the water acres?
I'm sorry?
One of the water acres?
Two acres, two acres. Well, so there are little Victorians in the neighborhood, they have little gables, and they have wraparound porches.
Oh, there are some on the other side of.
Right, yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a number of them around the neighborhood.
Sue hazens over on the other side on the.
Between central and.
Red one?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's white, white with a little picket line.
Between central and green.
I don't know the people's names in the homes. I know them by the color of the house. We have a, we have a, a precedent study, so we took photographs of the neighborhood, and we have them all hanging up in the office, and, yep.
But that makes a difficult on your back, what, what would you change at the back house, since it doesn't relate to any street?
Uh, we had a familiar feel, but it's deliberately a different house.
Good one.
Yeah, it's not, we don't have House Plan A, and then A with a different color door, and it is not really, they look like two different houses.
Well, we could put ten?
Um, possibly.
Ten seven.
The engineer, the engineer gave you guys the information.
Well, this is one point nine.
I'm just saying, if, if they could do this, they could do that. No, not unless it's approved under.
That's the old. We, we bought another section. The current plan comes from here, and then actually goes back this way, so that this lot is now two acres, and that's what was committed.
This is bordering vegetation, that cannot be touched, is that what that means?
Well, that's part of the riverfront protection area, and that mansion. But we do have two full acres to be able to work from.
If you count that.
Yes.
If you count, okay.
Yeah, our houses are really pushed over, up into this area, and then this line right here is this magic line. If we can work around this area, but we can only work in a very limited amount.
This one by sector of property.
Any of those are law courts.
No, these guys only own.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's a, that's a David plan.
Can't all lots along this thing, do you?
I don't know.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
One of the reasons about pulling the house forward, you'd be on top of the existing house on Central Street if you pulled it too much forward. Say that again? As far as this house goes, if you pulled it much forward.
Multi-family is a building.
Parrot's houses right here, if you pulled it forward much, you.
I wouldn't pull, I wouldn't pull it far enough.
The problem is, it's two.
We're just trying to space it.
I'm trying to. Not everyone wants, here, here, gavel.
And I have a basic, I have a basic question about, about the concept, about how you get to locate two single-family dwellings on one lot, 'cause my reading of the bylaw is that a single, each single-family dwelling has to be located on a lot that meets the, the zoning requirements, um, and so I think you gotta put them on separate lots, and each lot has to meet the frontage and, and land area requirements. Unless this is approved as a multi-family condominium.
This is the village district that we're talking about.
Oh, so you're, you're proposing to get a special permit under the New England Village Development bylaws that we're talking about?
Yes, yes, so that way, and again, that's why it's a condominium, it's a duplex. We have to come to before the planning board to get the special permit for the two fa- two-family on the lot. However, we're not doing attached duplexes, we're just doing detached, so that was the thought process.
Okay, all right, now I understand.
Rather than put a big two-family house on the lot, we decided we would have two single-family houses that's still condominiums, they're just, they're just not attached.
They just don't share a wall. I saw them at least.
Okay, well, you, you threw me off when you asked, I mean, I thought you were coming in here asking if, if we needed to approve the common driveway, which gave me the impression that, that you were, you were not proposing to get this, the entire development approved.
No, we just came to hang out with you guys tonight. No, actually, Kirk prefaced it.
Yeah, I was the one.
Kirk prefaced it with that, but it kinda got lost.
I think they're referring to it as a single-family dwelling might misconstrue it, it's actually a unit of the condominium. But it's, it's a detached unit as opposed to attached.
So the detached units, two, uh, two unit multi-family dwelling.
The shared septic, uh, the shared septic system. Which would require it to be a condominium.
The only way you could even consider a shared septic.
It would be the smallest multi-family.
So it's just, the entire thing is a special permit process.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, I think when we looked at it, we found we could put more units on it with, with, but we just thought this would be nicer for the town.
Well, is it, is it classified historical that, that there is?
It's in the historic district, yeah.
All right, all right, yeah. Well, one, the backdrop, the back building may not be in the historic district garden. It's all in the historic district.
It's close enough.
Two hundred feet from, two hundred feet from the.
We, we're going to see him.
But you're gonna do it anyways.
We're going to see him. We, we believe the value is in keeping it.
Oh, I do, too.
In.
Well, yeah, that's a, that's a good.
All right, Matt, what do you want us to do?
I think we got out of it, I think, what we were looking for, yeah.
Pretty much get the process moving here.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just looking for the concept to get your feedback on that, the impervious surface seems to be a concern.
What's your timeline to, uh, submit, submit applications and get the process, so you can build in the spring?
It's helpful, yes.
Before that, if we could.
Well, it's the weather a lot. All depends on the kind of winter.
You know, we need to see you guys, we need to see the conservation commission, we need to see historic commission, so.
But that, that kind of, you can do that, you know, kind of together.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't throw it out one.
I was told to remind you about your story.
Not gonna forget.
When I saw you, I knew. Just, if I could, if I could give you a little.
Stop promoting your agenda.
Background, they don't know.
We originally.
We're the hockey.
Yeah, I'm with the sports.
Should work.
You were originally told by the town plan that we could probably.
Let it into the name, or this.
Style and everything.
Yeah. Yeah, we try really hard.
Well, you better talk to.
We don't want it.
When you say town planner, okay.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, very detailed one.
You're talking to Kirk.
It's a good, it's a good point to bring up.
No, it's right, you're right.
That's what we originally looked at, and then we're like, looking at the neighborhood.
Potentially gets more in there.
We'd rather just do two houses that kind of fit.
Right.
Circa nineteen hundred era, era, and gets to build the street.
I think these guys wanna do something tasteful.
There's no way you could do any more.
Could have what?
Two, two families.
Even three or four units.
Dexter Drive.
You could have had two, two families.
We could have jammed it in.
We built several houses on Central, Arrowhead, we built several houses.
Oh, you did? The Grange was the schoolhouse that sits right here.
You guys, have you looked into the affordability of the car yet?
Right.
Yes, we.
Look at the street.
And there is.
Hey. I'm gonna get a gavel every once in a while.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, so you, you know the process, it's right there, but, uh, work with Kirk, of course, you know his art.
Yeah.
Uh, what are the times when things have to get into the town common?
Uh, yeah, it depends on how.
You need to, yeah.
You know, there's like a two, it would be a public hearing, so, you're, you're probably familiar with, but, but, public hearing process.
Two consecutive, but I don't want you to lose a week or two, because it's the way, the submission, him writing it up.
Three weeks, so you need, if you want to, like, um, it, it's like, say you wanted not to, to, if you wanted to advertise for, um, you'd have to, you'd have to get, get me an ad next week, uh, by Wednesday, in order to, like, run the ad the next two Wednesdays.
Sure.
And, and to, so it's, it's about a month total.
I think we wanna do, because we have to see the historic commission, conservation, and as well as you guys, we wanna make sure we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted with the design, and we have a really good design in, in order to present something that's thorough, which we're probably fifty percent of the way there, frankly.
Yeah.
Um, we need to, I, especially with the historic commission, you know, they're, they're really, they're really into the finer details, so, uh, we, you know, we wanna make sure to button those things up.
Yeah, and if you, right before you submit, if you wanna send me, like, maybe a packet just by email.
I'd, I'd love to.
PDF, like what you said, and then we can, we can evaluate it, do kind of a pre-evaluation.
Cool.
And I think it could look nice.
That would be helpful.
It could look nicer.
Yeah, I think it would.
It's a good spot, you know, now that the downtown has a few little places to go.
Well, you have the front unit that's a little add to the streetscape.
Fair, good. Well, the more, you know, they don't have much of a downtown, so if you create.
Yeah, two more houses will help.
Yeah.
Two more people will buy stuff at Arches.
Right. Well, it just makes it look more like, especially with the type of architecture and stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think there's not too many parcels such as this right there, and, you know, how many locations are there? It's not many left. Like you said, they're swampy, you know, riverfront, or, uh, it's low, it's low behind there, so.
Well, I think Abe makes a good point, and then fill in that streetscape a bit will make it feel a little bit more downtown, and I think that's what David brought up, and that question is sort of how far in and how far back should it be, and that's something we, we should work on.
How far back the building should be?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
To get that look, especially.
Originally, we were talking about putting them right on Church Street, but because of where the septic is gonna be and everything, that wouldn't work.
Right.
So that's why we moved them back.
The riverfront really limits, and one thing Matt didn't mention is even in portions of it, for the conservation commission, we're not, we're only gonna have slabs in the front, so that we can pull the houses like that, the extra ten feet closer to the septic system, so that we're limiting, uh, the riverfront, uh, impact, so. And just so you're aware, like, one of the things, in an unusual win-win situation, the conservation commission had requested that the area stay mowed, uh, to protect against invasive species, which I think will be a positive for everybody who would wanna potentially live there, to keep down insects and things like that, so.
Have you got a landscape design for it, too?
They'll, they'll, well, we have.
No, okay.
Yeah, they, they would like to have that, the field's been mowed forever, that I'm aware of, and, uh, they'd like to maintain that.
How big is that field?
Well, we.
Just the rest.
I would say roughly it's a quarter of five acres.
Right. Well, you can talk to the ConCon in there, you wanna have some edge, I mean, it's good, you have some edge habitat in the stream, I mean, you get good, have some edge habitat in the stream, I mean, you get a variety of, I mean, whoever lives there will feel, even though they're in the central district, they'll also feel very old as well.
Right.
They'll feel both.
Well, and that's the other thing, is the way the houses are situated, they're to take, no, sorry, they're to take advantage of looking out over that other field rather than anybody else.
No, I think that'd be very appealing to anybody looking.
You didn't think of two duplexes maybe?
Well, we did, but financially it doesn't really make sense.
Well, the problem with that is that there's no real way you can get two duplexes to look architecturally similar to the downtown, or it'd be difficult. I mean, they tend to be boxier, smaller.
You can't get the shape out of them, there's no porches, 'cause you have to fill in the areas with habitable spaces, and there's a lot of parking.
Is the six-bedroom septic the largest system you can install in, or is that gotta be a limiting factor as well?
As far as I know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the rest of what you get probably has to stay.
There'd be ways to do it, like one aggressive way would be to actually park underneath a building.
Sure.
Right, and then you could even have a septic there too, but, and believe me, we drew a rectangle and said, okay, just for the point of that, throw that away, 'cause we can't put our names on that and go to public naming like this.
No, I think this is a great, I mean...
So it seemed to be this was a sensitive way to utilize the property, and get some density without doing something that's egregious.
What do you have, what are the other squares, are those decks?
Yep.
Do you have yellow or wraparound porch kind of things?
Yep.
And in the back are decks?
These are the decks here.
Yeah, we're not sure whether we should have a deck here or a here, which is, it says possibly, you can't see it from there, which is...
Then you have that hatched-out square area.
That's the working area.
On the right one, the rectangle there.
This?
Keep going.
This?
No, the rectangle and the shaded, well, kind of a shaded gray line.
This rectangle.
Oh, that was from the engineer previously, where they had a thought for a house in that location.
That's what I thought, that's what you just dropped in on the lot, okay.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Take out the layer, okay.
Frankly, that's what you're getting away from, those two square boxes, you know, wherever they can fit.
Yeah, and there's no house at the front.
I live right down the street, and I don't want everybody yelling.
You stack them up, then you can get them in there.
I lost about half my friends in town when I put in Dexter Drive. I don't wanna lose the rest, you know?
I'm not rallying people with long memories.
It's not the rallying people.
You put in Dexter Drive?
Yeah.
That's right. All right, any other questions from the board?
Thank you very much.
Questions from you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I know... And when I referred to the...
It was Katrina. So get to know Kirk.
Dave's been part of the project.
Very happy to have, both Katrina started off having a plan, was the great thing, she was really paved the way.
Glad you had her.
Thank you, man, take care.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Do you wanna talk about what's done with that? Snow plowing is where it is. You want us to approve that letter or something?
I just want, yeah, I kinda wanted to...
Or to approve, anybody read it? Come on, Steve, you've been talking a lot about this.
What's the one?
This is what's going up to...
Who wrote the letter?
I just, I wrote it.
You wrote?
Yeah.
The question of the selectman or?
Town administrator was the big major, but I...
And the selectmen, and the highway department.
Yeah, and the highway.
Using's in your spare time, you figured you could start writing it?
Yeah, I'm just gonna write a letter, what letter we're looking for.
All right, this right here, it's dated November fifth. In essence, they're using the resources in the planning department to do something that I think, put it this way, they want to do in the coming season because of legal reasons that they're now trying to adhere to. This letter basically simply occurs with the land developer's responsibility for snow removal in subdivisions that are not accepted by the town. How many people don't have, one, two, three?
It should be, oh, it's not in the packet, it should be on the desk right.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the...
It's on the desk with the plan for the previous project.
I'll make sure that, I'll check with highway, the highway surveyor, see if there's anything else to add.
Yeah, please, see if there's any revisions, yes. Has Debbie seen it?
She, I sent it to her.
As long as everybody...
I actually drafted it today.
And they're giving you a list of people to send it to?
Well, they wanted to, I didn't really wanna get into who we were specifically, or call it, but yeah.
Her assistant for sending it out?
We're gonna send it, it's really between, because the planning board approved the...
Are they asking for our input to this?
I'm just getting, I'm just getting you guys to kind of look at it and...
Well, I just wonder...
Let her finish.
Really, I'm just presenting it to the board for you guys to ratify it and to say that you're okay with doing this, because it's really between the planning board and the developers, but, you know, it is like, it does the, I guess it starts with the highway surveyor and the, I guess, the complications of having to do the snow plowing, the confusion that the street hasn't been accepted by the town, well, then the town has liabilities to worry about, if you're actually, if you're plowing roads that the town has not been formally accepted and is not maintaining, and that these roads are actually still under the control of the developers until these roads are accepted, and it's their responsibility. So they're basically saying that some of these roads that haven't been accepted, like, you know, some of the ones we've been talking about very recently, that...
Cindy Lane?
Yeah.
Well, for now, listen up here, for, go ahead and finish, and then I'll let my sentiments fly.
Okay, yeah, and just basically saying that just letting the developers know, give them the heads up that it's going to be on them this year to actually plow those roads and to make them, you know, passable and safe, so.
Couldn't agree with you more.
I think it's a great idea that they regularly and annually are reminded of their obligation every time, but I also think that it might be, you know, where this is coming from the planning board, I think we should remind them what the enforcement mechanism is for this, and I'm not quite sure what it is. Is it the highway department, because for a while I looked on one of these private roads, and rather than getting those nice big, you know, four-ton snowplows that the town owns, we're getting some, you know, half-ton pickup trucks running around with narrow blades that were doing a lousy job, you know?
In a huge storm.
In a huge storm, and, you know, you call the highway department, they'd say, it's not our road, you know?
Yeah, and that's what, that's what they're saying.
First thing.
Somebody that's called it down.
You know, the other thing is raised manholes, plows hitting them, wrecking trucks, I mean, there's a lot that goes with it, but, you know, the flip side of the coin is, what about school buses? What about ambulances?
To my knowledge, school department has a whole different, they're on their own, like a separate entity, so they can, the town doesn't control whether they wish to, they certainly have the responsibility for picking up students, and they will continue to do so, and the town doesn't have a say on whether or not that occurs.
All right.
Okay, there's a separate, there's a separate legal entity in that regard, all right.
Any non-approved town road shouldn't be touched by the employees of this town, that should be solely up to the contractor himself, and he knows that, the contractor. If it's unapproved road yet, then he knows he has to take care of it, I mean, you know, if we're doing a farm, well, you know what, we're fools.
Well, and from the town's point of view, there are actually serious liabilities that should...
Of course there is, sure there is.
In plowing when it's not been accepted and it's not maintained by the town.
Do we have an idea of what these roads and things are?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could produce some...
Because they're not listed here.
I didn't list them there, I didn't wanna bring up, really cool.
What about Cindy Lane, is that, they're gonna be...
Well, these are all, all of them are also ones we're trying to get through the acceptance.
Not to change the subject, not to change the subject or anything, but now that you mention Cindy Lane, I mean, we haven't heard or seen of him since he was here that time. I mean, is there any ongoing discussion or effort to fix that?
We have, we were doing it.
There's some stuff going on.
No, Kirk is definitely, I mean, Kirk and I as chairman, we revisit this on almost what, bi-weekly conversations.
I knew we had to buy the conservation commission first, right? I don't know where that is.
Well, but, you know, you can only, we set these, we set conditions, we have meetings, we set parameters, I think Chris brought up, I think, the most, a really important, relevant point that, and Gino's this, I mean, to take, what incentivizes a developer to finish it, you know?
Money.
Money.
Holding money.
And I think, I think money includes having to continually pay for maintenance and be helped to that. You know, if the town to protect citizens and do services for citizens who move in here under the false, pre, or false knowledge that, you know, just because they move in, the town takes care of the road and doesn't know the whole process, and they don't, it isn't being communicated by the developer as to where they are in that process. The developer's not upfront with every citizen who buys their home, especially in subdivisions that go on for five to...
May not be upfront.
Well, may or may not, no, but some of these things go on for five to twenty years. Some of these homes could have already turned over three or four times, and still not be accepted.
Well, I guess that kinda goes back to my original thought, which is enforcement, I mean, I don't know how much of a hammer you wanna lay down on this notice, but if they're doing an awful job, yet you've got as many residences as there are lots on the property, do we use the bond to hire a private contractor to clear the, you know, the snow? I mean, it's an issue.
Why should we get the bond?
If the bond didn't actually specify snow removal...
Yeah, I think the subdivision control, I think we had legal opinion on this, that that money cannot be used for regular maintenance.
And who would send out the letters to the contractors of all these streets stating that they are liable and responsible for snow removal to implement weather?
Well, we're gonna send this letter out.
All right. And then they, then maybe you might wanna send one to the people in the development too, but let them know, you know, if the street's on plow, call your contractor.
That was suggested.
When anybody maintains property that they're still responsible for and own, obviously be responsible for maintaining in a condition where people don't get hurt.
As a life safety issue.
Yeah, but I mean, that's part of your responsibility for owning property, that you take all, every measure to, you know, if you do a continually crappy job, it's at your risk.
I know, a lot of towns, they require, you do the public sidewalks in front of your house.
You know? I don't know, I mean, it's definitely better to get these things accepted and have the town, put your tax money at work and have the town do what they're supposed to do. I think the town does a great job plowing.
Oh, I do too, but I don't think they should, they should have to...
No, the town itself, no, the town itself, don't you think it does?
Well, I don't wanna go into personal, last year they missed the radius by around twelve feet, so, on my street, so I was shoveling my...
Oh, but at least you could call and maybe get some recourse, you know? I guess because I live in a straight road with a bunch of contractors, it seems like as soon as the snow flies, you know, box of road, like, it's clear. It's like, you know, can you let a few more snowflakes, it's like the ad with the spark.
They're trying to treat railroad avenue down by me like a four-lane highway, they're pounding a bank, everything, but I guess they probably missed, probably knew the drunk drive there.
I was just saying, you could get some guardrails up there now, so...
They don't even know where your road is, they open up some stakes.
Well, you know, I'm actually gonna put some stakes right along the radius so that nowhere catches. When it comes to snow, it's impossible to know.
All right, does anybody, please email Kirk if you think there's any revisions, you're a good revisionist, so.
Well, you know, so much of what we talked about informed us for the next time we come up with these subdivisions, you know?
We're learning, this board, we're trying to, you know, when you have a, the various experience and have someone that can do the follow-through in the department.
Which, you mean, right.
What's next?
Does ZBA want to say anything about the ZBA?
The only thing is that I reviewed that.
It's a bunch of stuff, that's a lot of stuff.
Well, they send like a, they've sent whatever they receive, but when it really comes to...
Was this that use that was the problem on one thirty-three, and now they moved to Route One?
Oh, it's right, well, it's right on the corner of Main and Deerfield Road.
Where's that?
At three eighty-three Main Street, and it was a daycare, I guess, until recently, they had a daycare.
Three eighty-three Main?
And apparently this place has been used for, for some kind of commercial...
But it's in the outline?
It's in the outline district.
Is that Route one thirty-three?
Uh, Main Street is, yeah.
That's one A.
One A, sorry.
One A?
Yeah.
One thirty-three Sabres.
It's in Main Street, yeah.
'Cause I know, I think they moved, I guess Maffei, there was an issue, they had their trucks on Main, on one thirty-three, and now they moved to two one A?
Well, they're looking to move here, so the background on this is that that house had been used for different types of commercials, so it was, it was non-conforming and grandfathered in, and then a daycare had moved in, had been there for a number of years, and apparently because the daycare had been there, and the daycares are, I guess, allowed in all the districts, then, then it basically lost its non-conforming status, so they have to go back to the ZBA for a special permit, and the real question is, it's really up to the ZBA to decide whether this use is appropriate, and they're the special permit granting authority, they send all these applications out, I don't know that those...
Well, but if it lost its non-conforming status, then how's it gonna be approved?
Well, apparently that...
It's not allowed in that, it's not allowed use in that district.
It's not with a special per, it's under, well, the way it puts it's under...
Is that something that they would potentially, if they got approval, would be coming before us or anything?
No, no.
No, we couldn't approve it.
No, it's, this is where the...
Your DEX?
What, you're talking about change?
Yeah, they actually made reference to the, let's see...
Yeah, but that assumes you have a valid non-conforming use, if you've lost that status, then you don't get the change.
You can't modify a non-conforming use or change one use to another.
But that's not before us, though.
Can I mention one more thing before we go beyond this? I think the bobbin heads of the town should have a copy of this so they know they don't have to do those roads, I think Debbie Eager should have a copy.
Yeah, oh, it's definitely, yeah, yeah.
She's gonna be getting comments on it.
This way they don't have to waste their time, they know they don't have to go to these streets.
Oh, yeah.
They're not approved.
Yeah, exactly.
It's an ongoing...
Oh, I realize that.
Right, I think it's something they really wanna implement with our help this year.
Oh, I don't blame them.
It needs to be done soon.
The expansion of change of, change, apparently the ZBA can grant a special permit for a change of non-conforming use to another non-conforming use only, only if the zoning board of appeals determines that such an expansion or change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the non-conforming use.
Right, but up here it talks about discontinuance.
Yeah, but they were under the, I guess the ZBA was under...
She'll be abandoned regardless of whether they are intended to abandon, it's not used for two years.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
My suggestion...
All right, well, it's ongoing.
It's not really, I would give this a little caution there.
All right, so you know, so Kirk, we have no comment on that at this time, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, they're...
'Cause they asked for our comments.
So...
All right, yeah.
So we moved not to make a comment?
Yeah, I would just really report it to you guys.
Do you have any bills, so, the signed bylaw, man?
Oh, yeah, the signed bylaw, maybe.
I don't know. Will we sign us now, or?
Yeah, that's just a call to have the zoning review board meet.
Yeah, in a sense, I was, I guess I was wanting to get like directive to actually start.
Writing up?
Yeah, looking, researching it, and...
Tightening that up, because we're finding the loopholes in that.
Well, Cliff and I are members of that board, so...
Right.
Does the board have any trouble with Kirk spending some time looking into tightening up that bylaw?
I know the building inspector would like it.
Oh, what, the streets?
Yeah, it would kind of, the building inspector would like us to tighten up the signed bylaw.
Well, I think you.
Absolutely.
As well as the, uh, what, the, the accessory.
But I think the vehicle, the vehicle to do that is, is through the zoning review committee, so.
All right, so.
Would anyone else be the enforcer on that?
No, no, we're talking about revising the whole signed bylaw and going before town.
Oh, we're changing it, okay.
Is Bob Mary the one that calls the meeting?
He's the chairman now.
Is it, can we, um, have Kirk maybe, um, think that that's, ask Bob to start the zoning review committee to look at this?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it would take a long time to do.
The town plan, it was the.
What, the bylaw?
Oh, let us.
Yeah, they say, yeah.
So this is almost like a major, uh, revision of this bylaw, and maybe some templates in other towns that work.
That's what.
Well, we have a draft.
And a draft, so, you basically take this conglomerate, this, one piece of banana.
We spent a lot of work on it, a lot of time on it.
The one that's in there now is just, you know, it's subtraction by addition, it just all doesn't work as well as it could.
Well, I think, I think what's ever appropriate for wherever it's gonna go, you know what I mean, once it's a different spot, you know.
Well, yeah, there'd be different, there'd be different rules for different parts of town.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a good point, but that's, that's, you can do that with a revision.
A different text.
And what kind of business it is, you know?
It would be clarified, it would help the, the people coming in here.
I mean, there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we really don't have a design review advisory committee.
I mean, you don't want a Hilltop sign up there.
You know what I'm saying, we don't have a subcommittee that, when people want signs in other towns, a lot of times they go to a, a subcommittee of the planning board, and they, they, they're not a binding, like, a, a board that can give out permits.
It's like a design review, recommends to the board.
They recommend, so they do a lot of this work that takes time.
Subcommittee raises as opposed to, yeah.
Cause it's, it takes a lot of, cause they're very technical, they're very architectural.
Don't they have a fence for you and department of the town too?
Yeah.
There is a fence, right, face, fence, well, they should take a sign.
Uh, any other updates? We've already done this, is it, and then we can just sign this, and then we're done.
Okay.
No payroll?
Please, we have one more thing, one, two, three.
Actually, if, uh, I'd say, people, it's next week, if I brought it to the meeting this week, would that, does anybody have a problem signing it, or you prefer to wait?
What, you mean a blank form?
Yeah, I mean, it would be before the fact.
All right. You know, you gotta, not a.
Did you go?
It ain't frozen enough. Just call me up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm in town now all the time, so.
Appreciate the input on some conflict stuff that's coming up, so.
I'll make a motion with June.
Second, second.
We have a little bit of.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
The gavel's coming out.
So this is, uh, was the, like, the rein, uh, reindeer cavern, was that a, uh, New England Village, uh, special permit? Yes, it was. It was, so is this the second one that will come out? It would be, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I mean, it was, the bylaw was, was written specifically with that development in mind.
Where's we?
Wait, wait, I know you want to, I want to stop, stop.
Are we off?
Redo, no, redo the, uh, motion, please, so I can, so.
Make a motion with June.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.